I want to say good evenings, everyone. I'd like to call the planning commission. To order, I want to introduce the members of the board, starting from my right to left. George Weber from Madison, Bob Schwartz from Bonning Green, Purcell from Adrenar, Dr. Carol Horton from Port Royal, and Scott Sutherland from Western Carolina. Want you to introduce the staff, Craig Pennington, planner, and Lisa Sec, administration. Will you all please stand for please at the flag?
Wherever the need is to comply, United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, on a ground.
Can I get approval of the minutes of June of 2022?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we approve the minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
First thing on agenda, the subdivision SB-062022. A staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Applicants requesting preliminary plat approval for the next four sections of the Brightwood subdivision, now being called South Village, as well as the re-subdivision of the final portion of the original section two of the Brightwood subdivision. This plat creates 96 new lots and replats 17 existing lots in the subdivision. The preliminary plat is consistent with Caroline County zoning and subdivision ordinances and is a by right subdivision. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Um, discussion, staff or applicant?
Yeah. I, uh, okay, this, if I might make a motion.
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
At least they put this so far away from me, I can't see it anymore. I'd like to make a motion that where is the plat submitted appears to meet the requirement of zoning and subdivision ordinance, I recommend that SB-062022 for Southwood Development Corporation be submitted as approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next is SB-07-2022. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Applicants requesting preliminary and final plat approval for a subdivision within the Lady Smith Industrial Park. Lady Smith Industrial Park is an existing subdivision with commercial and industrial lots. Some lots were created with the intention of selling the lot to an individual owner for construction, while a portion of the industrial park was left as one parcel owned by Star Management with multiple tenant buildings for lease. The subdivision is to create a lot around one of the existing tenant buildings so that a purchaser may own the lot and utilize the existing building. Staff feels that the plat meets the regulations of the Caroline County zoning ordinance and recommends approval at this time.
Thank you. Discussion for staff or applicant?
Mr. Chairman, as I understand, this only affects one building, so it's going to have a minimal impact on the overall layout.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I get a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, okay? Especially since this is in my backyard, okay? I would like to make a motion that where the plat submitted appears to meet the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, I recommend that SB-072022 for Star Management be approved as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
That's it.
It's unfinished business at the moment.
It's unfinished business? Okay. The staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant hosted a community meeting on October 5th for RZ-052022 for the residents of Campbell's Creek subdivision to discuss the plans for the proposed development. No additional information has been received at this time, and the plat, the plans remain the same. The rest of the staff report remains the same from the June 23rd, 2022 staff, or Planning Commission meeting.
Can we open up the public hearing?
No, there's no public hearing for this, it's unfinished business, and so you guys can have discussion, or ask the applicant any questions or discussion that you may have with him or staff.
Well, Mr. Chair, I was at this meeting. Um, I was somewhat surprised because when they showed up here, they were definitely wanted to speak, but there were only three people at that meeting. So I was very disappointed that if they were in favor or against, that more people weren't there. That's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that the public understand that when we receive public comment, we listen to the public comment. Not only do we listen, but we hear them. And I remember the public comments, one of the major concerns was the amount of increased traffic, and that Deerfield and Route 1 was plagued with accidents, some fatalities. Based upon that, I contacted Sheriff Flippa, and I requested a report on the amount of motor vehicle accidents in that specific area. Sheriff Flippa, on July 14th, responded after having checked his records from the sheriff's office, as well as getting a report from Virginia State Police. The records went back to 2013. There was a total of eight, this is what the report states, eight motor vehicle accidents in the area. Most of them seemed to be around the school, which if you think about it, that's when you have the heavy traffic around the school in the mornings and in the evenings. There was a head-on collision on Route 1 at Jericho Road in 2013. 2015, there was a motorcycle, rear-ended, Route 1 and Green Road. 2016, there was a single vehicle motorcycle in the 13,000 block of Route 1. 2016, there was a pedestrian struck at nighttime on Route 1 in Spotsy Lane. Ironically, that pedestrian was the cousin of Sheriff Flippa's wife. Uh, again, 2018, a single vehicle on Route 1 and Page Road. 2018, a pedestrian was run over at nighttime at Route 1, north of Jericho Road. And 2021, a single vehicle in the 22,000 block of Route 1. And in all fairness, to me, that kind of belays the fears that the residents of Deerfield would have about motor vehicle accidents at Deerfield and Route 1. However, on the flip side of that, I think that we as commissioners have an obligation to look at what is in the best interest of the county, as well as the citizens who are going to be directly affected by this proposal. Deerfield subdivision is an older, established subdivision, limited ingress and egress. I don't think that it would be right to put the increased traffic flow in that subdivision to disrupt the peace and harmony of the citizens of Deerfield subdivision. So I am not going to be in favor of this proposal. This, it just doesn't make sense to me, so unless there's further discussion, I will have a motion.
Well, I, everybody knows this is in my neighborhood, so I drove through the neighborhood very carefully, and I think what Mrs. Schwartz is saying exactly the way I felt. I think that putting this amount of development in that area is the wrong thing to do. This is a very quiet neighborhood, okay? Very secluded, it doesn't need another 50 cars going in and out of the neighborhood. So I will not make the motion, but I will allow Mrs. Schwartz to make the motion.
So if I could, one of the things I, I rode through the neighborhood as well, went in and out of both entrances, you know, I lived in this general area for a long time now. So I kind of wanted to see what it was like, and I did hear the constituents when they came in, expressed concerns with, you know, the amount of traffic and just the potential that it could change the, the look of the neighborhood. But as well as that, from an applicant perspective, you know, I, I look at these, the, the drawing here, the subject properties, and I fully understand that at some point, you know, these areas were, would be meant at some future time to be developed. And when you move into a subdivision, if you're at the end of a cul-de-sac, you have to understand that you're going to have neighbors at some point in time. And I think right now, what's happened is applicants come forward with that proposal that they, they're ready to put those, that, those neighbors in. Um, so it's, you know, just something for us to think about, it's, you know, I understand it's constituents, but it's applicants as well, and, uh, that's what I've got to say, so go ahead, make your motions.
Yeah, and I would share that sentiment with you. I just don't think that 70 condominiums is what would be anticipated, so, and, and that's the real crux to the problem as far as I can see it. Do you have any further?
No, I'll visit site two, and, uh, you go ahead and make your motion.
All right. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the denial of RZ-052022, I recommend that RZ-052022 be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of denial.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
So the next one is amendments. Craig, now staff report, please.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, let me go ahead and read the public hearing protocol, get that out of the way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. Members of the public who offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representative will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised. And after the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or their representative will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Okay, thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously discussed, staff has been working with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality on amendments to the county's subdivision zoning regulations related to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Program. The amendments are a component of corrective action agreement related to issues identified by DEQ staff as part of its program review. Pursuant to our October 13th, 2022 meeting, staff has made the changes discussed and is forwarding the updated draft for your review. Previously discussed changes are italicized in black and new changes are in red. Also identified several code references that still need to be corrected, which will be completed for the October 27th meeting. We're going to hold a public hearing for all five text amendments at one time, and so the text amendments are as follows. TXT-072022, to add the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area as an overlay district into Article 15, Section 24. TXT-082022, to amend the zoning ordinance by repealing Article 15 supplemental regulations, Section 17 overlay district to be replaced by Article 15, Section 24. TXT-092022, ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, repealing and replacing Article 13 parking. TXT-102022, to amend the zoning ordinance, repealing and replacing Article 15 supplemental regulations, Section 14 site plans, Paragraph 18 Chesapeake Bay Preservation Areas. And subdivision ordinance 012022, to amend the subdivision ordinance by adding Section 6.3, Point 36, and 6.9, Point 21 Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area delineation requirements. Let me now open a public hearing.
Open up the public hearing? Anyone want to come forward? Do it now? Public hearing closed. Question for staff? Staff, do we have to vote each one of these individually?
Yes, Mr. Weaver, you'll need five motions, one for each amendment.
Thank you.
So we've been working on these a couple months, and we've had a couple work sessions, so, um, I did talk to Mr. Pennington, because there, there's still just, you know, a couple blanks in here, but, you know, staff has, has got something ready to go, and then it'll be all fine tuned right before the Board of Supervisors meeting in November.
Yes, that's correct. The blanks that are in there now are just for cross referencing, and staff will hit cross references before this goes to the board next month.
I must say, based on the fact that we took all the crossouts out of the document, we're actually able to read the document without getting confused. I mean, so, um, since we can only do a text amendment at a time, I would like to make a motion, if I may. I would like to make a motion about TXT-072022, whereas the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT-072022, I recommend that this be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, sir.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion in reference to TXT-082022, whereas public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT-082022, I recommend that this be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
So we're on 09 now?
Yes.
Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of text amendment 092022, I recommend that it be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Like to make a motion, whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice warrants the approval of TXT-10-2022, I recommend that it be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion, if I may. I'd like to make a motion, whereas the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of, and so, dash 1, dash 22, I recommend that it be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. Yes, staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next public hearing for tonight is SPEX-042022. The applicant is requesting approval of special exception permit to modify previously approved special exception permit for sand and gravel extraction to amend Condition 7, to remove the 100-foot buffer requirement on the eastern property boundary with adjacent property of Tax Map 4-1-4. Agents, agency comments were not solicited for this request. The applicant acquired the subject property from So light Corporation, which received a conditional use permit from the Board of Supervisors in August 1979. Condition 7 of the permit states 100-foot buffer zone will be required from all adjacent property lines. This includes the land adjacent to Route 17 that will be widened. The applicant is requesting a modification to Condition Number 7 to remove the 100-foot buffer requirement on the eastern property boundary. Removal, removal of the buffer will allow the applicant to continue its mining operations on Tax Map 4-A-1. The amendment would also provide the adjacent property, Tax Map 4-1-4, which has a special exception 02-2015 for sand and gravel extraction, access to the existing commercial entrance on Tax Map 4-A-1 for ingress egress, as authorized by the board with approval of SPX-02-2015, thereby eliminating the need for additional commercial ingress egress on Route 17. Staff believes the elimination of the buffer is appropriate, given its location abutting the approved SNEED sand and gravel special exception permit. However, the elimination of the buffer berm must be coordinated with the extension of the berm along the SNEED Route 17 frontage, Tax Map 4-1-4, to ensure the visual buffer from westbound Route 17 into the mid, mid-Atlantic SNEED properties is maintained. Additionally, maintenance of the buffer berm has been an ongoing county concern which needs to be addressed. Pictures of the property are included under attachment C in your packet. The comprehensive plan designates this area as agricultural preservation, and the parcel is within the resource-sensitive overlay district. The special exception conditional use permit was issued prior to the adoption of both the agricultural preservation and resource-sensitive overlay district designations. Staff suggests the following condition for the amendment to Condition Number 7. The 100-foot buffer required with the August 22nd, 1979 conditional use permit along the east side of Tax Map 4-A-1 is hereby vacated. The existing vegetation along the property line of Tax Map 4-A-1 and 4-1-4 shall be maintained until vegetative buffer berm along the Route 17 frontage of Tax Map 4-1-3 and 4-1-4 is established. All buffers' berms shall be maintained consistent with the purpose and intent of the resource-sensitive
Thank you, Craig. The applicant will make a presentation. Is the applicant here?
Would, would you like to make a presentation? So we can move forward with the public hearing then?
Public hearing is open. Anybody who wants to speak, to cancel or support this project, please come forward. Public hearing is closed.
Craig, you mentioned, uh, there was some maintenance of the buffer berm, it's been an ongoing concern, is that, could you add more to that or speak to that?
If you look at your pictures at the end of your presentation, that's the existing state of the berm, and so it does provide some visibility to block the operation there, but it hasn't been fully maintained, and so we would like to see it cleaned and maintained instead of having brush everywhere.
Was that part of the conditions, that it be maintained and clear of shrubbery or trees or whatnot?
Not originally.
Okay. But it's not that it's got wash outs to where you can see through to, okay, thanks.
No, no, sir.
Um, it's in my district, and I'm familiar with the area, um, but I do feel like I need to get more familiar with this extension that's been requested, and, uh, a little bit more familiar, we've had some accidents along Tide Water Trail, so a little bit more familiar with, uh, how the trucks, because at my understanding, is they're still going to be using the same road, even though we're extending the mount, the same entrance, even though we're extending the mount that can be mined there, possibly?
Um, so if the buffer remains intact, then a new entrance would have to be cut off of Route 17 to access Clark's Cut Sand and Gravel Operation. With the removal of the buffer, then both mining operations can utilize the same entrance, and we do not have to cut a new entrance in.
So, um, I would like to have a site visit and see what the options are.
We, we can set that up.
I would agree with Carol, I would love to go out to the site and take a look and see what's going on, which ones are we trying to remove, which ones are we trying to leave, so if we could set that up, I very much appreciate it.
Yes, we can, we can set that up before the next meeting, um, and so if you guys wanted to defer tonight, then I can work with the applicant to set up a site visit between now and November 17th, and we can continue it at the next meeting.
And I would suggest we defer at this particular time until we have the opportunity to go out to the site. Thank you.
Second.
So, okay, so that was a motion, Mr. Weaver, to defer?
Yes, that was a motion to defer. Yes, that was a motion to defer.
SPEX oh?
Until until we have the opportunity to go out and look at the site.
Okay. Are you are you deferring to the next meeting? Are you all trying to get it as?
Well, we'd like to get out there as quickly as we could, but yes, I'd like to defer it to the next meeting, and assuming that we can set up a visit between now and the next meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
Second, or has it been second?
Yes.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.
Next on agenda, SPEX dash oh five twenty twenty-two. Staff report.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Applicant is requesting approval of a special exception permit for a one hundred ninety-nine foot monopole cellular tower on parcel eighty-two dash fourteen dash B. Current zoning of the property is B one commercial. All of the surrounding properties are also zoned to be one commercial with Interstate ninety-five running on the east side of the parcel. The tower meets all setbacks for the property and is collapsible within the fall zone provided. The tower meets the zoning regulations required of cellular communications towers. Staff has offered the following conditions. One, to it to be recorded in clerk of the circuit court within thirty days from receipt. Two, screening and landscaping and or fencing shall be maintained around the equipment compound. Three, the equipment compound shall be maintained. Four, staff has an amendment to condition number four. After discussion between the applicant and the county attorney, condition number, staff would like condition number four to now read, construction of the tower shall commence within twenty-four months of the date of the issuance of the special exception and be diligently pursued to completion. In condition number five, the tower shall be designed to collapse within the fall zone provided on the plan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Charlie Alves. I'm an attorney with the firm of Williams Mullen here tonight, representing Verizon Wireless. We have a brief presentation. I won't take up too much of y'all's time with this. Can I just ask to move to the next slide when I'm ready or do I? Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, this is uh, this is where the site is located. It's right on the edge of a wooded area behind a Quality Inn Hotel at this interchange near the Flying J gas stations and other businesses in this area. And you can see the arrow pointing to the the hundred by hundred lease area where the wireless facility would be located. This is just the zoning map. The parcel is out is shaded orange, but it's zoned the same as uh, as the red parcels there, and the star is generally in the location of where the uh, monopole would be located. As you can see, uh, this this area is largely and almost entirely zoned for for commercial and industrial purposes. You see a little bit of residential, it's the yellow right at the top of the screen there, and then there is some um, rural preservation on the other side of the interchange at Interstate ninety-five. But this is a, by and large, a a commercial area with lots of businesses. This is part of our site plan. This just shows um, the where where the facility is located, the on the right side of this picture, the sort of U shape um, that you see with the parking lot surrounding it is the hotel, and then the square right under the yellow arrow is the lease area. And then the next slide zooms in a little closer on this, you'll see there's a fenced fifty by fifty compound, and the circle in the middle is the monopole that would be that would be the wireless facility. And this just shows the elevation of the monopole. You'll see it's a hundred ninety-five feet tall with a four foot lightning rod. There's space for um, four different providers to be on on the tower. Because it's under two hundred feet, there would be no lighting required. And the there would be a fence around the entire uh, area on the ground, closing all the equipment. Uh, my last slide here was just to to highlight the the requested change, and this is just because this is pursuant with state law regarding the time that carriers or developers have to construct these facilities. That those are the end of my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions from you.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public hearing is open. Anyone want? Forward against this project? Public hearing is closed. Question for staff?
I've just got one comment. I think it's a, I think the tower actually is probably in one of the best places. You don't have neighbors that come out and have to see it. We hear those comments, you know, or have heard them in the past, and uh, you know, anytime we can add something to help the coverage, cellular coverage in the county, I think every citizen benefits from that. So it's all I've got.
Thank you. Yeah, I get a motion.
So with that, uh, whereas special exception requests, SPEX oh five two zero two-two uh, appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use mapping, whereas the public necessity convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that it be forwarded to the board of supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.
In and all matters?
Mister Sullivan had so many in all matters for us tonight.
Yeah, um, so this is gonna be my last planning commission meeting. I'm gonna, I'll be, I guess, resigning. I've got some health issues that have kind of really taken forefront in my life, and I need to kind of work on those things at this point. But I really wanted to say that what an honor it's been to, you know, serve as a member of this commission. We have such an important role in being stewards of the county. Uh, I think it's not just the county, it's listening to citizens. I see some familiar faces out there, and you play such an important role in our decision making processes, so please keep coming.
Scott, I would like to say thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you. You're straightforward, even if I don't agree with you. You're straightforward with me, and I appreciate that so much, and I wish you all the best.
Yep, thanks, George. Um, so during my time on the commission, I've learned that, you know, we are stewards of the county. We also need to be sympathetic toward all the applicants and the citizens that come out and speak. You know, many of them represent small businesses. Lots of times we hear from the larger corporations, but those small businesses are really the backbone of the county and and our economy here, and it's so important that we we really listen to those applicants. I can't say we, you know, we need to help them all the time, but sometimes these processes are different for them, maybe the first time they're going through it. And it's important for us to kind of ask the right questions um, and and really read what they're trying to do. Sometimes they're they're not as clear as they could be. Site visits, I think, are a wonderful thing that we're able to do, really helps us understand what they want to do. You know, lastly, I tell you, you know, please remember the role that we play in Paxton County and its residents for years to come. You know, we can make a decision, and it may not come to fruition for two or three years, and you know, I'll probably, or we may be long gone, you know, no longer serving as commission members, and some of the impacts of the decisions that we make will still be occurring. So we have to really think about that as we go through these processes and make recommendations to the board of supervisors. Uh, yeah, I I truly believe that the board reads our minutes, reads our, you know, notes of what we did, and it helps them formulate how they make their decisions, so we play a very important role. I can tell you, you know, lastly, I'd like to thank Craig and Lisa, you know, and all the staff that, you know, help out at different times, whether it's a question, if you've got, you know, for, I don't know, Kevin White, and I called him a couple times. That's what always an interesting thing. Mike Fincham's been very helpful, too. Um, and just, you know, listening to each of our, you know, my colleagues here, you all represent your district, your people, and you all have a diverse, you know, set of ideas, and that that's really important in this. So thank you. That's all I've got.
God, I just want to say it's been a pleasure. I wish you well. May God bless you, you know?
Scott, I I just got to say it's been fantastic meeting you, getting to know you at Cali, and if there's ever anything that any of us could do to help, we're just a phone call away, and and don't you or Cali, either one, ever hesitate to pick up that phone, and Godspeed to you, my friend.
Thank you.
Well, miss you and wish wish you the best. And I'll miss you because you sat beside me and we could talk before and after meetings.
Yep. Well, I'll be back. I'll see you on the next meeting. I've got, you know, I'll be here as an applicant, so I'll see you then, and you know, might hop in, drop in a couple other times, just so I can make some comments, make our meetings work well.
Thank you, my friend. Can I get a motion to adjourn to the November seventeenth meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.